Good evening, everybody. This is the advertised time and place for the Thursday, June 5th, 2025 Planning Board Meeting. Please join the board in Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. We have three public hearings tonight. Matt, I'm going to call you up to help us out with Gouda LLC, please.
You got it. For the record, Matt Charter, Senior Planner for the Town of Riverhead, I will start by reading the public hearing notice into the record. Please take notice that a public hearing will be held before the Planning Board of the Town of Riverhead at the Riverhead Town Hall for West Second Street, Riverhead, New York on Thursday, the 5th day of June 2025 at 6:00 PM to consider the site plan application entitled Gouda LLC, which seeks approval to construct a 1,359 square foot office building with onsite parking and other related site improvements within a 13,617 square foot vacant parcel located within the Business Center zoning use district situated at 365 Harrison Avenue, Riverhead, more particularly described as Suffolk County Tax Map Number 600-102-3-4.1. If the Board sees, the site plan is up on our screen here. It's pretty simple to understand, one way in, one way out, off of Harrison Avenue. This application did require relief from the Zoning Board of Appeals to have a five-foot side yard setback and a 25-foot buffer where 35 feet is required along 58 in the front yard, which was granted by the ZBA at last week's ARB meeting. Elevations were approved. Other than that, I have the applicant here if the Board has any questions or members of the public.
Thank you, Matt. Anybody from the public would like to speak?
Good evening, Mr. Dzansky and members of the Board. I'm Adam Grossman. I'm the attorney for the applicant this evening, and my client is here as well. And in any case, you can see from the site plan, this is an unusual shaped lot. There are some challenges, but my client has tried his best he could to be as conscientious as possible in terms of where the primary structure is located and where parking is located so as to minimize any impact on adjacent property owners. I do also, you know, just want to mention that there was a letter submitted by the, one of the adjacent property owners, Richard Israel, who owns the Taco Bell next door. So he had a few comments, but basically, I'm here with my client to say that if you have any concerns about any aspect of the site plan that we can address, we're glad to do so. So any questions? We welcome questions.
Thank you, Counselor.
Okay.
Was there any problem with any of the questions that he posed to you? Or are you satisfied?
I think, in terms of what he, the issues that he raised, the fencing, that was addressed by the Zoning Board of Appeals, so that was actually a condition of the variance. And I think he was, he's concerned, I'm looking at his letter, the letter is dated May 30th. He's asking, I think it's important that the applicant remove all the trees and existing vegetation within the five feet along the Western, Westerly line. I don't know if we have a problem with that? Is that, that's acceptable? He's also, he also mentioned, and he also mentioned the existing trees along the, his parking lot should be being, my client's parking lot should be removed to make clearance for his curb and light poles, which I think we're fine with as well. So as to the dumpster, I'm not even sure if my client is going to need a dumpster. I know it's on the site plan, but he's not even sure if it's something that's going to be necessary for the use of the building. However, if we want to, you know, move it to a different location, basically, what he's suggesting, that is, the neighbor suggests that it would match the building if it were of a different material, the dumpster, that he's referring to the dumpster enclosure made of cement block, which is great. There is some text that suggests that it would match the building, which is of different material. Please have the applicant define the materials and exact location of the dumpster enclosure from the property line. I believe it's indicated on the survey where it's currently located, but like I said, I'm not sure if it's necessarily going to be needed at all. So basically...
Going to keep the garbage? You're not going to generate any garbage?
Well, it's just, I don't know if we're going to need a dumpster for the garbage.
Is that correct?
Yeah, and we can also screen, screen the, if, whatever there is in terms of, for garbage removal, whatever, whatever ends up being there, maybe something much smaller than a dumpster, would be screened with a chain link fence. And I'm just trying to see if there was anything else. The plan should also show the county dedication line that exists for all developed properties along Old Country Road. The Taco Bell parcel, which is the adjacent property owner's parcel, has a 15-foot offer of dedication to the county. And if the Planning Board wants us to do that, we certainly can do that. And that's it, but, but we're really, you know, not, I think that the adjacent property owner brings up reasonable issues that we're absolutely willing to address.
Thank you.
Matt, the 15-foot, is that, is that by law?
Yeah, so typically, the county always asks for that. I'm not sure that DPAW actually referenced it in their comments. It might have happened already because this property used to be owned by the county.
Oh, okay.
But if it's needed, though, DPW will call it in.
Any other speakers? Adam, did you want to add something else?
No, I just, no, I just wanted to mention if any members of the Board have any concerns that you'd like the applicant to address, we're happy to, to listen to whatever concerns you have and address them.
Thank you very much.
I'll move, we close the public hearing.
Second? Moved in second, Mr. Zelnicki.
What about Zoom? Sorry.
I'm sorry?
Zoom?
Anybody on Zoom?
Oh, I'm sorry.
We do have people on Zoom, I don't know if anyone wants to speak.
Okay, if you're watching from home and you want to speak, raise your hand so Heather can see you on the screen. Okay. Zoom him out. All right, the motion's been moved in second. Mr. Zelnicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. De Naro?
Aye.
Mr. Baer?
Yes.
And I vote aye. Motion's carried.
Very good.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Okay, moving on to number two, Sandy Pond Links LLC Clubhouse Trade Shops and Managers' Residence. Greg's not here, so Matt's can help us out again.
Got it. Okay, please take notice that a public hearing will be held before the Planning Board of the Town of Riverhead at the Riverhead Town Hall for West Second Street, Riverhead, New York on Thursday, the 5th day of June 2025 at 6:00 PM to consider the site plan application of Sandy Pond Links LLC, seeking to construct a plus or minus 31 square, 3,100 square foot clubhouse with covered porches and assess, as accessory to an existing nine-hole executive golf course and an 18-hole mini golf course, construct a plus or minus 1,040 square foot property managing residence and three 7,200 square foot trade shop buildings along with parking areas, landscaping, lighting, and related site improvements on a parcel of land located at 1521 Roanoke Avenue, Riverhead, New York, within the Residence B40, RB40 zoning use district, and more particularly described as Suffolk County Tax Map Number And I do have the applicant's attorney, Kimberly Judd, here. If the Board has any questions about this, the site plan is up on the screen.
Thank you, Matt. Anybody like to speak on this application? Anybody on Zoom, Heather?
No one with their hand raised.
Okay.
Kim, do you have the plans? I just wondered if you and Brian ever will go to consider the other entrance, commercial entrance on the south side of the property?
Yes, good evening, Kimberly Judd, 737 Roanoke Avenue, Riverhead, for the applicant. We did, and we were waiting to see if there was going to be anybody at the public hearing who was unhappy with that, but my client is willing to do that second entrance if that's the Board, the Board's feeling on it.
Okay, because, because when I met with Brian, the berm will stay, and there are trees planted there already, just maybe just add a couple more trees so the neighbors would not see that.
Is it Brian Stark?
Okay.
Did you want to speak, Brian?
Yeah.
Okay, come on.
Hi, good evening. Brian Stark, applicant. I spoke to the neighbors and I spoke to Eddie about, we'd like to do one entrance because I think it's better for us, and I think it's better for the roadway to have one entrance. The whole storage facility will be secure. I know there was discussion about if that use was going to be an attractive nuisance for the kids who were playing golf. It's our opinion that we like the site plan we have with one entrance, and we'll screen it. The second entrance might have been a problem with some of the neighbors, so that's why I think one is better. So that's, you know, my belief that we should stick with the one, and if we just have to screen and do other things, but to be clear, that whole storage facility will be gated, lit, secure. So I'd rather stick with one entrance on Roanoke Avenue.
But you're still going to have a second entrance to the, the house?
Yeah, and that'll be just for one house up against the south side. That, that will only, that won't access the, the storage facility.
With the storage facility over there, I believe, I can't see it from here, but on the drawing, they had tractor trailers, is, is that what you're anticipating having?
Well, the prior use that we're retaining is basically trade shops, so what was in there before was definitely not tractor trailers. It would be small tradesmen, so I don't know any small tradesmen that have tractor trailers.
No, I thought on one of the drawings that it had, like, a tractor trailer drawn in. I didn't know if that's what you're anticipating having in there or not.
Well, I think it's probably drawn in just so we know we have turning radiuses and things like that. If occasionally you have a guy in there, but the intent is not to have any kind of tractor trailer traffic on a regular basis. Trade shops are typically smaller.
I think the intent there was if you got a delivery from FedEx and they used a small trailer, you know, I mean, you can't stop that, it's just a quick delivery. You know, nothing that's going to be in and out constantly.
Yeah, I mean, you want to have freedom of movement there, you know, with the back, because all the loading stuff will be in the back.
Any other questions?
No, I'm good.
All right, moved in second, Mr. Zelnicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. De Naro?
Aye.
Mr. Baer?
Yes.
And I vote aye, the motion carries. Okay, moving on to number three, 840 Old Country Road. With Matt.
Okay, last but not least, please take notice that a public hearing will be held before the Planning Board of the Town of Riverhead, Riverhead Town Hall for West Second Street, Riverhead, New York on Thursday, the 5th day of June 2025 at 6:00 PM to consider the site plan application entitled 840 Old Country Road, which seeks approval to construct an approximately 6,060 square foot addition to an existing 8,368 square foot commercial building currently utilized for used auto sales and will include the reconfiguration of onsite parking access as well as a change of use to an adult-use retail cannabis dispensary with related site improvements within a 1.806 acre improved parcel located within the Business Center, BC zoning use district situated at 840 Old Country Road within the Town of Riverhead, more particularly identified as Suffolk County Tax Map Number 600-82-3-9.1.
Does the application need any zoning relief?
It does not. And I do have the applicant's representatives here and the owner if you have any questions. Site plan's on the screen, the Board can see they're reconfiguring the front, so we're getting our 35-foot buffer along Old Country Road, and they're moving the curb cut that's on Ostrander, Osborne, I always get them mixed up, Ostrander, further to the north.
How far are they from the school?
From the Riverhead High School, more than the 1,000-foot buffer requirement. I can tell you that, I don't know the exact.
Okay. Anybody like to speak in this public hearing? This?
Never done this before.
That's okay, take your time. It's a public hearing, so you have to give us your name and address, okay?
Mary Highland, 131 Scenic Lake. I'm in the Saddle Lakes Community.
Thank you.
None of us are happy about this cannabis place opening up two tenths of a mile from our over-55 community. There are four over-55 communities. We've had problems with break-ins to cars already, bringing something like this where you have nothing but elderly people, and you also have the Timothy Hill Ranch, which is for, you know, children of not the best circumstances, you know, you're providing this, and you're right next to the hospital. How ridiculous. I'm a nurse, I'm a retired nurse, but I think it's the worst thing in the world. Nobody starts out using cocaine or crack, they start off with marijuana. So Riverhead was written up last year as one of the best places to live on the New York Times. Now we're going to have to have an addendum. It's one of the best places to get your drugs. Nobody in the communities are happy about this, and I'm the only one who's annoyed enough to come here, but, you know, we could get a whole petition going because it's not fair, it's not to us that we moved here, we want to be in a safe community, and you're inviting problems. There's already two places to get your marijuana, I hate the smell. So there's that huge one on Old Country Road, and then there's a medical, how many do we need? Does Riverhead now have to be known as the place for drugs? Come on. So, thank you for listening to me, but I'm not happy.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
And I think it's going to cause a lot of issues with traffic because you're going to have Old Country Road, you're going to turn Ostrander, which is a one lane each way, you have gas stations, you have, you know, another business there, you're going to have, there's going to be problems. It's on the corner, the other one on Old Country Road is on a straightaway, people want to turn in. This is on a corner, there's two gas stations, it's going to be a mess. You're going to have traffic, you're going to have more accidents, and we have an elderly population that drive down these roads, do we really need to expose them to a situation that could be more hazardous to their health? So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other speakers? Do we have anybody on Zoom?
We have people on Zoom, but no one wants to speak at this point.
Okay, gentlemen, any questions?
I say we close the public hearing. George, one minute. Matt, is there a, how far from Residence, is there a footage from a residential?
So this property does have location approval from the town, so what, just so this Board knows, when a marijuana application comes into the town, they have to submit what's called a notice of municipality through the town's clerk's office. It gets routed to the planning department to make sure it conforms to our code. That process has already happened. In terms of distance from Residence, it's normally a 1,000-foot buffer requirement, but there's an exception in the code for commercial corridors, so there's commercial corridor one, two, three, and four. That, commercial corridor one is on 25A in Waiting River, starting at the town line going to where it joins 25. Corridor two is continuing there, it's 25 until you get about to 58. Corridor three is around 58 where this property is located. Four is on 105, east of 105 on 25, I believe, until Tuttles, and then five is from Tuttles until you reach the town line. So if you have frontage on and direct vehicular access to a corridor, you do not have to comply with the 1,000-foot buffer from our Residence.
Okay.
Little long-winded, but I think I got your question.
Second question, if this is approved across the street or any place within 1,000 feet, you can't put a, a, childcare or anything like that? You can't, now, an applicant can't put...
I don't know, I'd, I'd want to rely maybe on the town attorney's office for that being that this use is here, there's a separation distance requirement, I don't know if someone else could choose to develop a childcare facility and be less than 1,000 feet, it's, it's hard to say, but this, there, our distance requirements are to establish one of these businesses from what you're buffering from, if that makes sense, so.
Okay.
People may regulate the location of the childcare facility.
Yeah.
And that would come into play when, if it wanted to come. But I don't know the...
Yeah, so if, if dawn didn't get picked up, the state has its own regulations which also dictate distances from those sort of uses, so they might preempt.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Thank you. I think you moved it, George?
Yeah, I moved, closed the public hearing.
Moved in seconded, type of vote, please, Mr. Zelnicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. De Naro?
Aye.
Mr. Baer?
Yes.
And I vote aye. Motion's carried. Okay, let's go right into discussion items. We have one item, Osborne Residence, Chapter 219 at 2705 Roanoke Avenue, with Heather.
Good evening, everyone. And we have Mr. Cuddy here for the applicant. For the record, Heather Tojanowski, Planner for the Town of Riverhead.
How you doing, Mr. Cuddy?
Thank you. This is Mr. Madigan, who is the architect.
What's your name, I'm sorry?
Sean Madigan.
Thank you.
So this is a Chapter 219 application, seeking to construct a one-story studio over a full basement and also a two-car detached garage all seaward of the coastal erosion hazard line. In addition, the applicant is proposing site alterations, including a new sanitary system, grading, drainage, they are going to revegetate some disturbed areas. The subject parcel, more particularly identified, a Suffolk County Tax Map Number 600-15-1-1.1, is a 1.13 acre parcel located at 2705 Roanoke Avenue in Riverhead within the Residence B40 zoning use district. I believe that the Board is probably familiar with the area, and I know you live up there. It's a very peculiar property in that, you know, the southern portion of the property slopes down from very high elevation, levels out slightly in the area of the driveway, that's where this new construction is being proposed, slopes down again, and then the existing dwelling actually sits right on the beach, I think at about, between elevation six and seven. Its pre-existing benefits from a letter, pre-existing use, was built, I believe, in about 1911, so it's very old. In terms of compliance with code, this will need relief from the Zoning Board of Appeals as they are the coastal erosion hazard board of review because the new development is not specifically permitted under Chapter 219-14 Subsection B. But I wanted to bring it to the Planning Board just to, you know, introduce it to you because if they are successful with the Zoning Board, they will be back to this Board for Chapter 219 approval. I did refer it to Vinnie, our consulting engineer with the Rainer Group. He sent a memo dated June 2nd, which I circulated to the Board and also the applicant's attorney. He is really just looking for a soil boring to be performed, and then he had a question about the driveway encroachment, which in viewing the property historical files, it looks like there was a boundary line agreement. You know, I would be happy to have the town attorney's office look over that just to make sure that any sort of encroachments between the subject parcel and the parcel to the east are, you know, all taken care of, and that there aren't going to be any issues. I also started the referral process with the New York State DEC because it's unclear whether the wooden bulkheadings plus the line of the house, and then it looks like there's a retaining wall on the western portion of the property were in existence prior to the Title Wetlands Act of 1977. And I, you know, corresponded with Mr. Cuddy about somebody to joint application to determine whether they would need a permit from the DEC or if DEC would issue a letter of no jurisdiction. So...
They haven't gone to DEC, then?
No.
No.
No, I reached out to DEC just to see, you know, what they, what would be required. I sent them the plans and the application, and they came back with requesting that joint application form be filled out, which I'm assuming Mr. Cuddy and/or the applicant or the design professional would take care of. I would just ask that I be, you know, either copied on any correspondence, just to be kept in the loop. Other than that, I visited the site. Again, it's, it's a difficult site to develop, and I understand why they're proposing the structures and the spot that they are, but the seahaw line is everything, including the new development, is seaward of the seahaw line. And it's, it's almost as if they're, at one point, were two points of inflection, but, you know, years of erosion and looking at historical surveys, it, it appears that the top line of the bluff is about where the driveway sits. And there, there is existing vegetation, there are areas of noticeable washout, particularly along the northern end of the driveway, and then also the southern end of the driveway where the property steeply slopes, you can see in the pictures in my staff report, there's a lot of exposed tree roots. And then just other observations I made, there's bamboo and what appears to be mugwort on the property. I'm sure DEC would be very amenable to having those removed and replaced with native species, you know, if they're successful with the Zoning Board and they move on to construction, it's expected that all of this would be removed, and the applicant's design professional is proposing some native species and plantings in those disturbed areas.
How do you remove bamboo? I mean, it's extremely difficult. I know from a couple of my neighbors had some, and they actually wound up building a retaining wall to stop it.
Yeah, there is an existing retaining wall at the end of the driveway. I mean, I don't know if it's like, yeah, it's a small area. I mean, whatever they could do to start removing it, I defer to the DEC as far as management of invasive species is concerned. Mugwort is equally as difficult to remove just because of the root structure. I was talking with Jeff Seaman, and it's a, it's an extreme nuisance on coastal properties, residential properties, it's everywhere. And, you know, the longer it's allowed to spread, the worse it's going to get, it's going to basically choke out native species that contribute, you know, positively to the biodiversity and ecosystem and also the root mat that stabilizes the bluffs, so...
Did they, did they do a test bore to see if the septic will work there, at that elevation?
I think that's what Vinnie was asking. They didn't show it on the proposed plans, but it's something that we'll want to see.
I don't think we have a boring test, but I'll, I can confirm.
Yeah, so that's something that I would definitely recommend.
Yep.
We also have an engineer who couldn't come tonight, but yes, we're working on that.
Okay, yeah, just verify that, it's good.
And Mr. Cuddy, is this going to be a second Residence on the property?
Not so ever, no. I will explain in a minute when she gets, what we think we're doing, okay?
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I mean, I'm not going to read through the entire property history. I know I went in a little deep as far as, like, the subdivision and the CNRs. Obviously, it was contemplated at that time by Planning Commission Planning Board when the subdivision was approved, you know, that this was an environmentally sensitive area, and they had notes about, like, no grading, no clearing and cutting, vegetation within 50 feet of the top edge of the bluff. In addition, the approved subdivision map actually has, like, a setback line on it, 100 feet from the mean-high watermark, which is just south of where the driveway area is. But again, like, where their building envelope was shown on the subdivision map is where the property is most steeply sloped, so arguably, that would probably be more challenging to try and build something if someone were to want to retreat from, you know, the beach where the house currently sits, that's usually the goal, is to retreat away from points of erosion or beach areas. You know, it would be difficult to develop south of the driveway. Nevertheless, it's not permitted by code, so the decision lies solely with the Zoning Board.
Okay.
Okay? Just to go over what we think we're doing, I don't know if you have her report in front of you, but I think page five has a picture that's worthwhile to look at. Because it shows the actual parking area, this is a completely level, flat area, and this is basically the top of the bluff. In other words, it's been done years and years ago. My client bought the property 30 years ago.
ago. My client bought the property 30 years ago. When he bought it, it was like this. And he said to me, he had been there earlier, many years earlier, and it still was like this. So, the area that we're going to work in is going to be essentially a level area. It's -- now, we're not on a slope. We're basically on a flat, level plane here. We're going to put a garage. It's 545 square feet. We're going to put a writer's studio, and I can go into that a little bit, that's going to be essentially 670 feet. It's going to have a basement, and Mr. Madigan can explain the reason for the basement, but it's not an accessory apartment whatsoever. It has a half-bath because it has a bathroom with a sink in it, but doesn't have a shower. The person who's a writer lives with Ms. Osborne in the house just below this. She's -- her name is Susan Har. She's a recognized writer. She's having a play in London in the Kingshead Theater in July and August. So, she's an actual writer. It's not just somebody that's come along. She's looked to have this place in -- for quite a while, and as you know, there's a section in the code. I don't know where it heads off to, but it's a definition called artist dwelling. So, I think the town considers this type of thing to be something appropriate. It's not something that unusual. The entire site, as I say, has been used over and over again as a garage -- I'm sorry, a car place without a garage. Ms. Osborne is getting older. He'd like to have someplace he could put his car, get it out of the rain. She would like to have this small studio. And as I say, the studio itself is 600 square feet. It's not a big building. We're aware of the covenants that we just heard about, but I think that those covenants really don't apply to this site for two reasons. One, the site itself has been there for a long, long time, and it's been graded. So, we're not doing anything that's going to disturb it any more than it's been disturbed over the period of time. And it's really preexisting. It pre-exist in 1983 covenant that was put on. So, we believe it's an appropriate use, and really, they're just accessory uses. These aren't -- this is not a primary building, which we probably could do, but it would be in the middle of the slope, as she just pointed out. So, we think this is an appropriate use. It's not something that's going to, I don't think, destroy any part of the area, and we're going to have drainage. We're going to have a septic system that will show that we can put in. I think that overall, that all he's asking for is something that most people would expect to have with their house. This happens to be in the coastal erosion area, but it happens to be an area that's completely level, which is really unique. So, we hope the board would consider it. Mr. Madigan is here and maybe can explain a little bit to you why we have a basement in the studio.
Yeah. So, we're -- I mean, because of the topography right where this flat area stops, we're cantilevering maybe a few feet, four and a half feet. Underneath that, we have -- basically, we're just using the retaining walls that we would have to make or the foundation walls that we would have to make to build this. Adding the basement, I think, is just it's using space that was--
Storage?
-- kind of created, and it's an unfinished storage--
Is that what the basement was for?
That's the only thing it would be used for.
It would meet the definition of like a cellar, you know, under the building code. It would be more than 50% submerged or whatever. So, did you have any questions?
Will this studio be open all year round? Are you heat and air conditioning, everything?
It's intended to be, yes, conditioned. The main studio area would be conditioned, the garage not, and the basement below not.
So, someone could spend a night there?
Pathetically, yes, yeah.
The possibility of that is small because they now live in the dwelling right down below.
Down below, yeah.
They don't seem to have too many people. I don't know if you've been to the site,
but-- No, but I -- yeah, I know.
To get to the dwelling is a big deal.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You have to go down steps. Then you have to go down more steps and more steps, and then you get there. So, the possibility of having too many people over to the site is pretty small.
There's a lot of steps there. So, the reason for that bathroom is you're writing all day or whatever. You don't want to have to walk the -- it's like a five-minute walk down there. It's a pretty long distance.
But we don't have a problem covenanting that it's only for this purpose whatsoever and that no one -- I understand the thought that possibly could do that, but--
Yeah.
-- we're trying to avoid that happening by whatever you would like us to do because we--
I think mostly the, like, the artist villas that you were referring to, I think that was pretty much for downtown Riverhead. They wanted walkable community with artists' lofts up top years ago.
I have one that's in Orient. It's in the middle of the field, and it's an artist studio, and was just approved last year.
That's where they get their inspiration from? Fine.
No, I'm just telling you. So, I can understand what you're saying.
Yeah. No, I just remember the thought. I was there back in the day.
Okay.
I don't think the use of the structures is necessarily in question because they would be accessory and subordinate to an existing single-family dwelling. You know, this board's focus and also the zoning board's focus is the, you know, environmental aspect of it and whether or not, you know, it's going to meet the criteria--
Yeah.
-- for relief from Chapter 219.
So, there's not going to be a kitchen. The bathroom is just going to be there?
That's right.
No cooking facilities or anything?
No.
And the basement is probably just going to be like a mechanical room for the heat and air conditioning?
Got to be like that.
Yeah. So, outside of the soil boring that we're going to need per Vinnie's memo, is there any other concerns of the board?
I just have a question. The owner, you said, is Mr. Osborne? Yes. Is that of Osborne Avenue? Any relation? Not that I know of.
Sure.
We'd be owned--
I say there are--
Hippman Auto Body.
-- spells it with an E. Sometimes at Osborne, it's no E.
Right. Yeah. He owned Hippman Auto Body.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Competitor.
Yeah, Auto Body.
Other than that, the applicant and his attorney, they've been provided with a denial letter so they can proceed to the zoning board and--
We're in the process of doing that.
Okay. Good luck.
Thank you. Well, just, you're going to make application to the Health Department's-- Oh, yes, absolutely. I had something similar. The reason I waited because the -- because of the height, they said that there was no jurisdiction. But this is in South Oak within Riverhead, so I'll find out if they take the same position.
Okay. Thank you. All righty. That's it on discussion items. Public comments on resolutions. Anybody can speak on resolutions? I don't see any hands up, so gentlemen, if you want to run the resolutions.
I'll move Resolution 2025-049, TJOC Real Estate Holdings to retain LKMA as a professional consultant to the planning board to review traffic impact study in connection with the comprehensive developed plan on -- for a 15.8-acre parcel of land located on the north side of Middle Country Road in Calverton. So moved.
Second. Moved in second, Mr. Zonicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. De Naro? Mr. Baer?
Yes.
An aye vote, yes, the motion carries.
I'll move Resolution Number 50, which deems draft environmental impact statement for the site plan and subdivision of TOC Holdings, excuse me, to be inadequate and sets further review before the Planning Commission.
Second.
Moved in second, Mrs. Zonicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. De Naro?
Aye.
Mr. Baer?
Yes.
An aye vote, yes, the motion carries.
I'll move Resolution Number 2025-051, Calverton Industrial Subdivision issues a positive declaration requiring the preparation of a supplemental environmental impact statement. So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, Mr. Zonicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. De Naro?
Aye.
Mr. Baer?
Yes.
An aye vote, aye, the motion carries.
Resolution 2025-052, National Grid Facility Upgrades. Resolution granting administrative site plan approval for a site plan application seeking to perform improvements on existing national grid facility.
Second.
Moved in second, Mr. Zonicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. De Naro?
Aye.
Mr. Baer?
Yes.
An aye vote, aye, the motion carries.
I'll move Resolution--
Hold on one second, George. Okay. No, I'm sorry. Go ahead, sir.
2025-053, Susan McCarthy, minus subdivision, granting an extension of the minus subdivision approval. So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, Mr. Zonicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. De Naro?
Aye.
Mr. Baer?
Yes.
An aye vote, aye, the motion carries.
I'll move -- oh, we have something on jets. We not --
No, it's nine. Next page. I thought the same thing a minute ago.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I'll move Resolution Number 54, Jets LLC, minus subdivision, granting extension of a minus subdivision.
So, I'll second it.
Moved in second, Mr. Zonicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. De Naro?
Aye.
Mr. Baer?
Yes.
An aye vote, aye, the motion carries.
I move Resolution Number 2025-055, Manor Lane, minus subdivision. Resolution granting extension of minus subdivision approval for a minus subdivision application entitled Manor Lane. So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, Mr. Zonicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. De Naro?
Aye.
Mr. Baer?
Yes.
An aye vote, aye, the motion carries.
Resolution 2025-056, Malice Property, Minor Subdivision. Resolution granting two 90-day extensions of a minor subdivision approval for a minor subdivision application.
Second.
Moved in second, Mr. Zonicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. De Naro?
Aye.
Mr. Baer?
Yes.
An aye vote, aye, the motion carries. Table, we're going to make a motion to table. I understand from the Department of Law that the applicant is not ready, so we're going to table it.
Second.
Somebody move it?
I'll move it. Move.
Moved in second, Mr. Zonicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. De Naro?
Aye.
Mr. Baer?
Yes.
An aye vote, aye, the motion carries to table. We'll see them in the future.
Okay. I'll move Resolution Number 2025-058, 1080 to 1120 Old Country Road Facade Improvement. Resolution granting administrative approval for the site plan application entitled 1080-1120 Old Country Road Facade Improvement. So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Matt, do we know if the lighting is coming into compliance?
So, everyone should have gotten a copy of the amended plans, which had a lighting schedule, and everything is 3,000 Kelvin height compliant downward facing. So, yeah.
Lighting's coming in, and they're painting both buildings to match.
And they're adding landscaping to the existing.
Awesome. And they did put trash receptacles all the way around the facility, so--
So, that's all the fine fear, fine fear of all that lighting is down.
Yeah. It's all going to comply, and then when -- I think when they first came in, they were only showing that they were painting like half the building. They're going to do everything.
Awesome.
Great.
Okay. We moved in seconded the motion. Mr. Zonicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. De Naro?
Aye.
Mr. Baer?
Yes.
An aye vote, aye, the motion carries. Okay. At this time, we're going to have public comments on all and any matters.
Good evening. My name is Craig Dolgren from River Road in Calverton. I'm here tonight to make a couple of comments about something that was brought to the planning board recently, and that is the Duke Motocross application for the 2822 River Road.
So, the--
This isn't going--
That application is before the town board for a special permit. This night is the planning board.
And does the planning board have any approvals to have with that?
That application will not come before the planning board, except for site plan.
Okay.
That's only if the special permit's granted.
Granted, correct.
Okay. So, should I wait and meet with the town board for this, then?
Yeah. So, it was on town board just to begin the secret process on this past Tuesday.
Okay.
I can stop into the office tomorrow if you want to review the application. We have it there, and it will be to this board and eventually hit the special.
Okay. All right. Thank you then.
Okay, Craig. Any other comments? Okay. We have the minutes of the meeting of May 1st.
I'll move them. I'll move the minutes of May 1st.
Moved in seconded, Mr. Zonicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. De Naro? Mr. Baer?
Yes.
An aye vote, aye, the motion carries. I guess we have no secret actions tonight, Matt? Okay, good. Other business staff? You guys staying busy?
Yeah.
All right, good. No correspondence?
Yeah.
Our next meeting date, because of June 19th, we will not be here in June. The next meeting will be July 3, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. If somebody wants to make a motion--
So moved. Second.
Moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Have a great weekend, everybody.